Welcome to the boardroom. Today is Monday, December the 3rd, 2018, and at this time, the board is called to work. We always begin our meeting with a prayer and a pledge, so at this time, I would like to ask everyone to stand, and Mr. Brown will lead us in our prayer, and Mr. Brown will do our pledge.
Father, we thank you for this day, and we thank you for all the many blessings you've given us, Father. We thank you for this time of year, and we pray, Father, that we would keep the real purpose of Christmas in mind as we go into this holiday season. Father, we thank you for the people that have come before us tonight, and we pray, Father, that we would do everything, God, that we do that would be of benefit and uplift our community in our county. Help us, Father, as we go through this night, guide us and direct us, and all is said and done, we'll praise your name. Amen.
A pledge, a salute, a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, commissioners, we have the minutes we need to approve next, and we've seen those, had our kids read them. What's the pleasure of the board concerning the minutes?
The pleasure of the board, yes.
Discussion, on our favor, say aye. Any opposed, light sign. Okay, we have the agenda before us. Are there any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda by staff or board members?
Yes, sir.
Okay, there are meetings on schedule with the board concerning the approval of the agenda.
Please.
Discussion, on our favor, say aye. Any opposed, light sign. Okay, as always in December, following last year, we have the Associate Chair and Vice Chair, so at this time, I will turn the meeting over to our clerk who handles the nominations. So, Madam Clerk, the floor is yours.
Okay, at this time, I will take nominations for Chair.
Madam Clerk, I'd like to nominate the sitting commission chairman, David Walker, for Chair.
Are there any other nominations? Do I hear a motion to cease the nominations?
Say.
All in favor for David Walker as chairman, say aye. Raise your hand. If you want to raise your hand. And David did not vote. Okay, at this time, I will take nominations for Vice Chair.
Madam Clerk, I'd like to nominate Tony Brown for Vice Chair.
Do we have any other nominations? Do I hear a motion to cease nominations?
Say.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Okay, thank you so much, and as always, you know, to people watching, I want to say that we've got a great board. This board sincerely cares about you as the citizens of McDowell County, and they do a good job. Every board member is just great to work with, and we appreciate each other so much, and an opportunity to have this seat and represent you two. At this time, let's move to our first item on our appointment schedule, and we have Mr. Chad Ray here with us, a Carolina fan, as everybody knows right here. Chad is, does, works tirelessly with our 4H group, and he does a wonderful job, and been doing that many years. So Chad, we're going to turn it over to you, my friend, and you've got some people here that we're going to get to see tonight and hear great things about.
Oh, yes. First off, thank you for letting us come. We come throughout the year, we really appreciate y'all's continued support. It really means a lot to the kids in our program, that y'all really know what we're doing and care about what we're doing. But tonight, we're going to kind of go over our year highlights from 2018, 4H. We have educational programs, and competitive programs, school and research programs. Tonight, we're going to highlight some of our competitive programs in our horse shooting sports, and our livestock. First, I want to introduce Chloe Lidle. Just the end of it. Our horse program this year, we had 35 youth from six counties showed our local horse show in April. From there, we had 18 youth showed our district horse show in Fletcher in May, and 14 of those qualified to move on to our state competition. And then we had nine youth that actually went to state 4H horse show in Raleigh, and Chloe Lidle right here won grand champion for the saddle seat division. But she didn't stop there. Chloe then went on to compete at the Southern Regionals 4H Horse Show in Perry, Georgia, last week of July, so congratulations. We've got a very active shooting sports program here in the county. This, in the spring, we compete at the North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission Hunter Education Tournament, and that's held in Vail, North Carolina. This year, we had 17 total youth. With one junior team and one senior team, our junior team placed second overall and went on state competition, and then where they had nine juniors compete in Elrby, North Carolina, at the state wildlife competition. In August, we had 23 youth from McDowell compete at the district 4H Shooting Sports Tournament held in Polk County, where 20 of those qualified for state competition. In September, we had 17 that went on, went back to Elrby, North Carolina, and competed at the state competition. And I'm going to highlight two of the three, Drew and Sarah, if y'all will stand. For the second straight year, we had three of our McDowell 4Hers, or not qualify, compete and get chosen to represent the state of North Carolina for the state 4H Shooting Sports Team, and they went to a competition with, I think, 37 states in Grand Isle, Nebraska in June. Sarah McPeters is with us, and she competed in small bore pistol. Drew Bryan's with us, and he competed in recurve archery, and Becca Bryan, who's at Carolina right now at school, she competed in compound archery. So let's give them a round of applause. And then, we also have a very active livestock program, both livestock showing and judging. This year, at our annual livestock show, we had 74 youth from 11 counties that showed 170 animals in 261 classes. So that show was really taking off the last four or five years, thanks to Adam Loane, our livestock agent. There's a lot of impact, not just in McDowell County, but surrounding counties as well. We had competitors come all the way from Nash County this year to compete there. In our livestock judging area, they competed in several competitions this year. In January, they went to judging in January in Raleigh, where six kids competed. In April, they went to the Spring Fling at the WNC Ag Center. We had seven kids compete there, and Colton Cox was the high overall senior. Then we had three kids attend Oklahoma State University Livestock Judging Camp and contest this summer in June in Oklahoma, which was Hannah Ellis, Molly Anderson, and Colton Cox. At the North Carolina State 4H Contest in Raleigh, we had eight kids compete, and Hannah Ellis, Hannah, if you'll stand up, was first place senior individual, and our McDowell senior team was the first place overall, so they were state champions, and that was Hannah Ellis, Allison Biddix, Colton Cox, and Haley Lawls. Then they went on to compete at the NC State Fair Contest with five kids, but this year, we had something special. We haven't had this, well, I'm sorry, it's the second time since we've been here. We had 4Hers selected for the North Carolina 4H State Livestock Judging Team. So Hannah and Ally will stand up. They went on, they went to several competitions in Maryland, where else besides Louisville?
I think Keystone, Pennsylvania.
Pennsylvania, all over the country, livestock judging, and then they ended it up, ended up at the, let me make sure I say this right, the North American International Livestock Exposition Contest in Louisville, Kentucky, just a few weeks ago, where they competed, and our McDowell's own Greg Anderson was their coach. They made us all very proud, they made the state proud. I think Hannah, you ended up 21st overall. She was, I think, 12 points from fifth place overall, and the top 20 are All-Americans. So it's very, very impressive what they did, so let's give them a round of applause. So I invited all our kids tonight that had been to our national competitions this year. Just from our numbers, you see, if I brought everybody, just even went to a state competition, we'd have a room full for you. So they're doing great work. They're still, we've got a lot of work left to do with their big plans, but that's kind of our 2018, so now we're looking forward to 2019 and bringing more kids here next year to introduce you to. Would y'all like to ask them any questions, or anything? Put y'all on the spot.
I'll make a comment that I've been to the livestock, I've witnessed the livestock showing and the judging, and the things that y'all have to know to be able to be a judge or to show is tremendous, and I really had a good, good time watching y'all, and y'all are just the cream of the crop, so to speak. So we're, our board is really just proud of all y'all do, and it's wonderful to see y'all excel to such levels and be nationwide, number 21 out of the nation, so that's tremendous, and all of what everybody else has done, great. It's just encouraging to other kids, just to see y'all do that, and you know what? You may, you may be the catalyst to get another kid who's on the fence about doing it, to, hey, look, I want to do that, and y'all can get them involved, and 4H is a great program. You're not sitting in front of video games just like this, you know? You're out there doing practical things that's going to be beneficial to you in the long run, and so anyway, anybody else want to say anything from the board? Oh, Molly, go ahead.
Let me highlight one thing. Hannah was actually, she was fourth in reasons in the nation, and Allison was eighth in swine. Is that correct?
Wow.
That's very impressive. I'd like to also highlight Allison just for a second. All these programs I've mentioned, Allison's a part of. She's the only one that is actually, does horse showing, livestock judging, livestock showing, and also shooting sports. So she is, she qualified for state competition and everything, and then if you remember Ms. Vaughn, she was also our McDowell County representative at the North Carolina Association County Commissioners Meeting also, so Allison's really been putting her time in and making McDowell County proud.
Yes.
Let's give her a round of applause.
What is your favorite, Allison? What's your favorite horse?
Dangerous thing to ask.
You got one?
I'll, I have to say it's between the shooting sports and the horses. Like, it's pretty close between the two. So.
Adam McGregor's not here, so she can say that.
I did not realize until I started serving on this board just exactly what the 4H in McDowell County did, and y'all never cease to amaze me at everything that you do, all of the competitions that you go to, and the work and the time that you put into it. I had an uncle that came to this country back in the early 1900s. He was 14 years old, and he came from Hungary on a ship by himself, became a chef in Miami, Florida, and told me, as I grew up, he said, "Your body is the best investment you'll ever make. Buy the best food that you can find." You guys are the best investment that we can make in our county, and we are proud of you. Thank you.
One other thing, just, they are the experts in their field. I have, I don't know much of what they know, but I have people call and ask me questions, and it's usually the kids I turn to talk to. Chloe, you've been, you've been riding horses since probably you could walk. She's involved, she knows her horse stuff inside and out. The livestock judging stuff, I was joking with them before, they could have done better if they would have had a better coach when they came in earlier, but I know there's a sheep, there's a goat, there's a horse, or a cow and a pig, see, I'm not even saying horses, but they study hard for this, they put a lot of work in it. Hannah Ellis also done a lot with the FFA, livestock judging, and other competitions for those, so they put the work in, and now they're starting to reap those rewards, and so, congratulations, guys.
Hey Chloe, what's the favorite, what's your favorite horse? What type?
Kentucky.
Kentucky.
Let me just say one thing, too. I know some of the parents of some of you guys, and I don't want to sound like a livestock judge, but you guys are out of good genetics, and I think that's showing.
You know you was coming to be a judge, didn't you?
And they do all this great work with 4H, but they also do great work in their studies in school. Like I said, Becca couldn't be with us tonight because she's a Carolina. Hannah and Allison are getting ready to graduate. You've got one more year you graduate this year. He's got two more years, third of college, so this is their side gig on top of school, so they do represent us well throughout the camp, community, and county and all that
C. We have the route, or you say route or root?
they do, so, good job, guys.
Root.
Okay, thanks so much, and let's get y'all's picture made up here, okay? Root, route, I heard you do. Route. We have the Route 70 Cruisers here tonight, and listen, y'all do, we're talking about
And smile a little bit.
And we'll get ours made up. what a great job they're doing in their field, y'all doing outstanding job, too, in McDowell Do y'all like, do you like the new red band you got? County. So I don't know who's going to speak tonight for y'all. I know the old red band is sort of...
They broke it in well, that took them to Oklahoma and...
Okay, welcome to the boardroom. The floor is yours, my friend. That's good.
Yeah, I've never been bashful.
Got a lot of miles already.
First of all, my name's Philip Poe.
We appreciate it.
We want lots of miles in that thing, because that means you're out there representing
I married into the county, and the first thing I'll say is I've been in all 50 states.
us well.
I'm kidding. I'm kidding. I'm hot.
That's right.
And there's no place I'd rather live or be than this part of the country.
Push her out of the way and move her.
Anyway, we were first formed, the first meeting was November 2009, at Steakhouse on the Five
I say, boy, she grown.
Oh.
Lane. In 2012, we became incorporated in a 501(c)(3). From there, we have about 40 members. That doesn't count spouses. So we're sort of a small car club. What we do, we put on two events a year, one in April, that's our money maker, the big car show. We'll average between 200, and we've had 400 vehicles in Old Ford. So it brings a crowd. We do another one, and we do both of our events in conjunction with the town of Old Ford. Pioneer Day in April, Oktoberfest in October. Helps bring more people to those events. So those two help raise the funds that we donate back to local charities. That's more of our mission statement is what we do. We have, it's rare, but we have donated outside McDowell County, but majority is within the county. We do support other shows, including now the Eli Kinsley Scholarship Fund, that raises money for the scholarships at McDowell High. We also support McDowell County DSS Christmas fundraiser. Did something this afternoon. It's touching in a way. We adopt five children every year at Old Ford Elementary. These are kids that won't have any Christmas. My wife and daddy, they do all the shopping. All the kids get two pair of pants, two shirts, underwear, socks, hat, gloves, jacket, and at least one item on their wish list. They're all wrapped, and we delivered those today to the school. So there's a lot of things that we do that a lot of people don't know about. We like to support the lunch bunch, Operation Backpack, especially things that have something to do with children. We support, there's a small car club at the high school. We try to go support their events, and hopefully, they'll take over when all the gray hairs and no hairs are gone. So we have a list of, you want to handle that?
I already have.
Okay. Of our donations by year, we were here in 2015 when we went over $20,000 in donations, and that was actually our worst year for donations because October the 4th was rained out and flooded. But in the three years since, we've done another $30,000. We have a large check, which happens to have a 57 Thunderbird in the background on it. That was our total as of October. That total is now $52,788 that we've donated back in the county. And it's nice to have old cars. I tell this people all the time, old cars are fun, but it's nicer to give back, to do something worthwhile. And that's kind of what we do. We take no money, all the money we raise is donated back.
Philip, I say it's great, you're taking something that Americans love, their cars, and especially the old classic cars, and you're taking a passion you have, and then becoming benevolent with it and supporting different causes, and that's, that's great.
Well, the neat thing is, everybody has a car story. Doesn't matter what their age, you go to a car show, and you see all kinds of people walking around. My granddaddy had one of those. I got married in one of those. So everybody has a story, and it's just fun to listen to them.
Can I, can I take just a second, and since Philip said that, and I know Lawrence and Philip, and Jan, I know you guys already know the story probably on my old truck, but it's pretty cool, that old truck that I've got. It's just an old rag, you know, and it's worth nothing to not many people, but I bought that truck when I was like eight-year-old. I had worked all summer for an old farmer, Buck Melton, in Luther Hole, and I'd worked for them all summer, and through the entire summer, I made $75 for the whole summer's work. And I was with my dad over in Old Ford when Hobo South would run that station over in town. He had this old truck sitting out there with a for sale sign on it. It was an old service truck, and so I walked up to him, and I said, "What do you want for that old truck?" And I think that he just, because I was a kid, you know, he just had sympathy on me, so he said, "How much money do you have?" And I said, "I've got $75," and I pulled it out, and he said, "That's exactly what I wanted for that truck." And so he let me have that old truck for $75, and I've still got it.
You bought that truck when you was eight years old?
Yeah.
That's an old truck.
If it, if it makes you feel any better, it's a '37 model.
Mr. Brown.
Yes, sir.
How much you say you got paid?
How much what?
Seventy-five.
I made $75.
So you were overpaid.
Jan, say something good.
Any other comments by board members?
And also in saying that, I'd like to see our board give them a donation for the good work that they've been doing.
All right.
We don't turn anything down.
You gonna put that form of motion in? Make a form of motion?
I make a motion, we give a donation.
Okay.
How much? I make a motion, we give them a $1,000 donation.
I'll say.
Say. Discussion? On our favor, say aye. Aye, and opposed, light sign.
Half of the club, we appreciate that.
Now, we don't have a hard check, it looks pretty like that, but if you'll see Allison, she'll, she'll take care of you. Or Tony, he's giving a thousand till we get, they get their money. Y'all, we do appreciate what y'all do, and a passion is evident in y'all's eyes, and you know, seeing y'all, and going to the shows, y'all do great, and you're giving money back to the community, and that's what it's all about. And the most, two of the most vulnerable people or groups, the children and our seniors, and y'all are taking care of kids, and with the majority of what you're doing, and that's great to do, and we commend you and say, if we had a hat on, we'd say hats off to you, but great job, y'all. Thanks. Give them a hand. It's all right. Let's get a picture made with y'all, and that check up here, and the commissioner's behind.
Big check.
Thank you.
Okay.
It is a lot of money. Thank you.
Let's move, we're just slightly ahead of schedule. Let's move to item A, under new business. This would be administrative items. Mr. Wood, go ahead and lead us up, sir.
Three items here won't take a lot of time. The first item is a resolution requesting that you designate William Keller as the primary agent, and Allison Bell as the secondary agent to work with FEMA and the North Carolina Emergency Management on the Florence reimbursements. They will do all the paperwork and forms, et cetera, on our behalf.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wood.
Motion to approve request.
Second.
Discussion, on our favor, say aye. Aye, and opposed, light sign.
I guess resolutions.
The, the second is a resolution donating the badge and selling the sidearm to the retiring Jackie Turner Jr.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
So much. Second.
Discussion, on our favor, say aye. Aye, and opposed, light sign.
The next one will take a little bit more time than that. Won't rehash too much, but about nine months ago, the board had talked about this in more detail, but the county owns about 65 acres near Lake James on Forest Lake Heights. That was, again, that was purchased for a water treatment plant for a future development of that water system that we own and operate. Long story short, Duke essentially told us through the relicensing process that we couldn't use that for a treatment plant, and we had to look elsewhere. We've bought additional property and so forth. So this property has been surplus for a number of years. We receive offers, sometimes they're laughably low, $10,000 or something, and we don't even mention them to you. We have brought in recently, I think six or nine months ago, a $100,000 offer, and explained that we don't really have a minimum, but we did want to present those. The county had paid $171,000 back in 2004, for this tract. The board rejected the $100,000 offer, and again, we have received a $110,000 offer as of today or Friday. I talked to the chairman earlier, it might be beneficial for staff if we had a minimum, so we wouldn't waste anyone's time, your time, the bidder's time, et cetera. A suggestion might be what was paid at the time, it'd be the absolute floor, and if it's not at least that minimum, we wouldn't bring it to you or even proceed with it.
I recommend 175 as a minimum.
Okay, you got a motion, you have a second.
Second.
Discussion, on our favor, say aye. Aye, and opposed, light sign.
I just want to make a comment on that. The last time this came up, it was my stance then, that if we paid $171,000 for it, which I wasn't on the board at that time, but 15 years ago, if we paid $171,000...
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wood.
Motion to approve request.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye, and opposed light sign. Okay?
It's resolutions.
The, the second is a resolution donating the badge and selling the sidearm to the retiring Jackie Turner Jr.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
So moved.
Second. Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye, and opposed light sign. Okay, Mr. Wood?
The next one will take a little bit more time than that. We'll rehash too much, but about nine months ago, the board had talked about this in more detail, but the county owns about 65 acres near Lake James on Forest Lake Heights. That was, again, that was purchased for a water treatment plant for a future development of that water system that we own and operate. Long story short, Duke essentially told us through the relicensing process that we couldn't use that for a treatment plant, and we had to look elsewhere. We've bought additional property and so forth. So, this property has been surplus for a number of years. We receive offers, sometimes they're laughably low, $10,000 or something, and we don't even mention them to you. We have brought in recently, I think six or nine months ago, a $100,000 offer and explained that we don't really have a minimum, but we did want to present those. The county had paid $171,000 back in 2004, which is tracked. The board rejected the $100,000 offer. And again, we have received a $110,000 offer as of today or Friday. I talked to the chairman earlier. It might be beneficial for staff if we had a minimum, so we wouldn't waste anyone's time, your time, the bidder's time, et cetera. A suggestion might be what was paid at the time, it'd be the absolute floor, and if it's not at least that minimum, we wouldn't bring it to you or even proceed with it.
I recommend $175 as a minimum.
Okay, you got the motion, you have a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye, and opposed light sign.
I just want to make a comment on that. The last time this came up, it was my stance then, that if we paid $171,000 for it, which I wasn't on the board at that time, but 15 years ago, if we paid $171,000, and we take less than that now, 15 years later, we're just wasting the taxpayers' money. And that just don't sit well with me. So, $175 is, is good. It's, it's worth as much to us as it is to the developer.
That'll help staff, so we don't, again, waste anybody's time bringing, trying to guess where you might end up. That'll help potential bidders, too. Thank you very much.
Okay. Now, this time, let's go ahead and move to our next item on our appointment schedule. This is item D. We have the Pilot Club of Marion here, and they're here to give us an update. So, good to have y'all, and Karen is coming forward, so I guess Karen will be doing the speaking tonight, correct?
That will be me, and I have to bring everything to my level, so.
I understand.
So, you know. I was here a couple of months ago, along with some of my pilot sisters, and I'd like to thank you guys for giving me the opportunity to speak with you once again. I'll give you a brief introduction about the Pilot Club. It was founded in Macon, Georgia in 1921. It was designed as a volunteer service organization for business and professional women in the area working with brain-related injuries. Pilot since has expanded. We include men. We do have some co-pilots. Two of them are here with us tonight. And they're around the globe, and they're in all walks of life. The motto of the pilot organization is to do more, care more, and be more. This pilot organization was chartered in McDowell County in 1972. So, a lot of great women have been here before me and maybe have come and talked to you. Billy Martin, yesterday at our tree lighting ceremony, said that his mother used to cook for the pilots during some of our Christmas functions and things like that, and that brought back some memories to him when he saw some of those pictures in the paper. And you guys may see some things in the paper from, you know, Remember When with the Pilot Club. One of the things you guys were particularly interested in was Project Lifesaver. One of our members, Lucille Huffman, and I believe she was a charter member? No, she was not a charter member. Okay. Well, she was not a charter member, but she was the lady who got me into pilot organization. When I got married, I didn't know anybody down here in McDowell County. She knew my husband, and so, bring her to the Christmas party. I went to the Christmas party, and these ladies are just remarkable with what they do. Luke was the one who helped bring Project Lifesaver to McDowell County. Project Lifesaver helps individuals with Alzheimer's or any other type of brain injury, anybody on the spectrum. And with the equipment that we helped the sheriff's office purchase, we also helped them get bands, their bracelets. And Mr. McPeters, you would know that it, it just takes an instant for somebody to walk out of their house. If they have one of these bands, their caretaker can, you know, turn their back for a second and they can be gone. They can call the sheriff's office, and the sheriff can hone in, kind of like a cellphone, on where that is and bring that individual back to safety. Or if they need to call the EMS or the police, or if the sheriff needs to go get them, they can do that. The last time I checked, the sheriff's office said that they were good, but a band, a bracelet, costs $300. If anybody needed one of those, they will let us know. We will try, we will actually gather up the money from our, what we had yesterday, our Christmas tree lighting. Thank you Commissioner Vaughn for coming to that. We had more people come to that. We had Addie's Chapel come, their choir sang beautifully. We had Mr. Martin come and talk a little bit. We had the mayor. We, we had just a really good time and some beautiful weather for our tree lighting ceremony yesterday. We also help provide some support for caregivers during stressful times. Sometimes this is stressful for people, so what we do is we give them little care packages if they need them. We make up little care packages. We did win an award for our, at our district convention, not this year, but the year before, for making pick-me-ups. And we have done that for our EMS, for our sheriff's department, police, firefighters, and other services here in McDowell County. Fundraisers are the, the tree lighting, which was yesterday. In our vial of life, we do that, and Mr. McPeters would also know about that. We have, we put a little pill bottle that Marion Pharmacy donates to us. We get, we ask the people to fill it out in pencil. They have a magnet to, for them to call 911. They have to put in all their medicines, their medical conditions, and we ask them to put it in where their butter dish is. That way, if EMS comes in, people don't have to remember. They can say, "I've got my vial of life," or they have a vial of life, and they can take that out, and the EMS can see every condition that person has, and it makes it easier for them to be able to treat their patient. So, we ask them to fill that out in pencil, erase it when their conditions change, how much medicine they're on, when they take their medicine. So, like I said, it makes it easier for EMS either to call it into the hospital or to give them the medicines that they need that they have on the truck. And that's, that's what we do. We're a little group with a small, we're a small group with a big heart. We probably have about 12 members. Some of them are with me tonight.
Karen, can you recognize your members that are present tonight?
I would be glad to. We've got Sharon Godfrey, Beth Tony, we've got Gail Miller, and we've got Gail Rivera, and we've got Samantha Parrow, who is our newest member.
All right. And the alto pilots?
Our, our co-pilots?
Our co-pilots, yeah.
Our co-pilots are Mr. Mike Conley and Mr. Louis Parrow.
All right.
But they help us with the heavy lifting.
Well, you know, our board really appreciates the work that y'all do, and, and we had some conversation over a tree not long ago, and I'm so glad that's all resolved now. And, and our board in the city of Marion and the Pilot Club here again, any discussion about the tree will get together as, as a three-member party and move forward together. And, but I think it'd be great for our board, in, in recognition of Project Lifesaver, Lynn's been, had experience with that through the sheriff's department and Brenda, I think it'd be great if our board could at least buy four of those, or $300 apiece, and that way, there's four more people in McDowell County that could be helped. So, what's the pleasure of the board? Any motions?
So moved. Second.
Okay, discussion by board members?
Let me say one thing about the Project Lifesaver while we're right here, and the public needs to know this. I don't know how that the sheriff's office advertises that program now, but the national average of finding somebody that has walked away from home, either a child or an elderly person that has Alzheimer's, dementia, is 30 minutes. The national average of finding somebody is 30 minutes. That's a far cry from trying to find somebody for three days and the outcome not being so good. So, we need the public to know that that is available.
And it has worked in our county.
And we can run on the county channel, too, some, get with y'all and work on some kind of information that people can access that and get in touch with y'all, who the powers may be.
Dave.
If I can add something on that?
You can. You're with the Pilot Club, so you feel free to speak.
What I'd like to say is, when we were affiliated with Jason's Getaway, Jason's Getaway being the Ben Breakfast for families with special needs children, we have actually, and I'm sorry, I'm not on that board anymore. I keep saying it, I'm sorry. There were several people that would come to the Ben Breakfast to stay, but one of the first things that they would ask is if we had that particular program in the county, because they have children or adults and their families that use that type of service. And since it's a national service that can, or service that can be connected to the national, I'm sorry.
Dad base.
Dad base, yes. They are able to help those families also when they visit our county.
One question. On the bracelet, the actual goes on the arm, is that the, I mean, when, is, can anybody, do they turn those back in, or is those interchangeable, so it stays with the person, correct?
Stays with the.
The batteries have to be changed once a month.
Okay.
So, that's part of the 300 that, that.
Got you.
We have had, we have had situations where that maybe somebody passed away, or that they chose to maybe go with another program, and they would turn that back in. We've been able to use that for another person.
Okay.
Right. And we worked well with the last sheriff, and I'm sure we'll be able to work well with the sheriff this time, you know, this, this sheriff. I have not had a chance to talk with him, but that is on my agenda to, to speak with him and see where we're at and what we can do if we need to, to send an officer for education or what we need to do. So, and I don't know how much the education would be.
All right. Well, great job. Let's get a picture with y'all now, okay? Do we have a, we, we take care of it? Got a motion, a second? Okay. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye, and opposed light sign.
Getting a lot of exercise tonight.
Trying to get you loose. Get you ready. At least they got you in the middle this time.
No, I'm getting everybody. But I'm a little biased today.
Where y'all today?
Thank you.
Thanks so much, Paul. Y'all just another example of great things happening in McDowell County, volunteers working and just, just making this a better place to live. You heard Mr. Poe, he's been there for state and the union, and no place he'd rather be than McDowell County. So, one thing we need to do as a board is always foster a climate that people want to come and partake and enjoy and live here and raise their kids here. So, with that being said, let's move to our next item on our appointment schedule. This will be the item B under new business, Regency and Economic Development District. Go ahead, Mr. Wood.
This is pretty straightforward. Regency or Isothermal Plant and Development Commission is the multi-county region that serves McDowell County. They take the lead on a lot of different initiatives on our behalf. We are a member of that group and pay dues every year, but they are asking to have an endorsement to be designated as an Economic Development District through the U.S. Economic Development Administration. It will help seek federal grants, so there's no cost to the county, but this is definitely something we would encourage to help us in the future obtain funding.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion, we approve the resolution.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye, and opposed light sign. Okay. Let's move to item C, under new business. This is the Christmas, New Year's schedule. Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir.
Right. We just want to make sure, and we do advertise this for our offices and convenience centers, et cetera. The county adopted the state holiday schedule several years ago, mostly because of the tag office, because so much of that is tied into state operations. And so, about four or five years ago, we just aligned with what schedule they have, which thankfully, they published that and we can follow that. So, we will be closed December 24th, 25th, and 26th, which is a Monday through Wednesday for Christmas. Close on New Year's Day, which I believe is a Tuesday on January 1st. Did have in the memo, and we'll definitely point out that folks that work for the sheriff's office, for EMS, sometimes for public works, sometimes facility maintenance, a lot of those folks work either partial schedules or all the way through those holidays. And so, staff and board definitely recognize that, and I know the public does and appreciates that. When they call 911, there's someone there to come out, not taking a holiday on those. So, those that do have a break, do appreciate those that are working. Appreciate it.
Okay. And that's for information. Let's move to item A under old business, no wait, zone requests. Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. On the 19th, when you met, you held a public hearing to request comment on a designation of an area around the Old Wildlife Club, one of the peninsulas there. There were at least one comment, one comment made in person, and I think four or five emails that have been received from other property owners in that area that were presented to you that night that were in favor of the designation. And though since then, you have received additional emails. I've been copied on most of those. I think, I know Commissioner Green has been out on the site and seen it, maybe others. We don't have a public hearing scheduled tonight, but I know the board wanted to maybe reconsider the request tonight with, with a little more information that you could obtain in the interim.
I did go out and, and look at the site, and my reason for, for going and looking was I wanted to see just exactly where the site was at and how much room that, that we're talking about, because I feel like that we have an obligation, not only to the, to the homeowners there, but also to other folks that use the lake. So, and from what I can see, if, if it's, I believe 50 yards?
Yes, sir.
I believe, I think there's plenty of room to do that.
Okay, other comments, questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have recently, since this came about, been getting a lot of feedback from some of the sportsmen and I guess people that use the lake for recreation, fishing, otherwise, that they felt like they were shorthanded on this and didn't have an opportunity to speak or come forward. And I'd like to make a motion that we do have another public hearing and allow some of these people the privilege to come forward and speak.
Okay. You heard the motion. A second?
Second.
Okay.
January 14th, would that be the, the next meeting date? Is that them?
All right. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye, and opposed light sign. Okay. We'll give one more opportunity for a hearing, and then, then we'll vote.
We've done it.
We'll come out of the public hearing that night and vote, because we've had ample time then to hear everybody.
Exactly.
Okay. So, it's going to be on January's meeting and public hearing, then vote to take place after the meeting, or hearing. Okay. All right. Let's move to item C under, excuse me, item B under old business. This is a shooting range update. Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir.
It's fairly brief update. There hasn't been a lot of movement on the state's part on this project. Ironically, as we were putting this agenda together, I had a call, believe about this time last week, from the state contracted appraiser who scheduled a visit with the site, and Mr. Harmon was there today. So, what they're looking at, again, the, the board has talked about this maybe about six months ago, where the state is asking for a donation of a portion of that county property, and before that can proceed, they need to understand the value of that property and approximately how many acres would, would be requested, and that's not been determined yet. But I talked to Commissioner Brown about it. He's been to some of the meetings with us in Raleigh, and there's a request on our part, I mean, with Wildlife, to get an in-person update with some of their project officers, and I believe we've got that tentatively scheduled for January to really find out what's going on. There's a lot of work behind the scenes, but we're just not entirely sure where the schedule of things, where things set. And so, they may have everything under control, but exactly getting a lot of detail, but they're working on it from what they've said. So, we, we get emails every couple of weeks that they want to be led into the site, they go test the water, or, you know, check out some environmental conditions. So, they are working, but we'll have a more understanding in about a month and present that to the board.
Okay. Comments, questions? There being then, let's go ahead and move to item C under old business, the Stacy Hill Road. Hill Road Water Project Update. Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir.
Very, very brief update. This is again, one of those projects, this is a lot easier to see progress if you drive down or up Stacy Hill Road, the Nevo community, you will see upturned dirt and hydrants, so you can definitely see progress there, even though we haven't talked about it a lot in this room. That project should be completed in about three weeks, which should mean water should be flowing very soon, and that's a great thing. The master meter relocation, I believe, will be the last aspect of the project, and that will mean an addition of about 15 customers from the city system to the city system to the county system. And so there will be a communication with those water users, you know, to expect the final billing from the city before we start sending them a bill. So this has happened before where we picked up some city customers, the deposits are brought over, and it's fairly seamless. We'll work with those folks if there's any issues, but it's been a fairly straightforward project, and we're excited to wrap it up soon.
All right, great, great. Let's move to our appointment item E. This is the transit update and approvals. Mr. Conley, who is our transit director, is present with us, and as always, he's looking very sharp and dapper, so the floor is yours, my friend.
Are we able to get the overhead on? All right, well, I'd like to start off with an update on our deviated fixed route. Staff have been working with landowners in the city of Marion on the proposed location to determine if we could place a bus stop on their property. We reached out to several owners and have received 26 verbal commitments so far for the route. This route is subject to change, once it's been running, and we know the utilization of each stop, so we may be cutting some stops or may be adding some. Majority of these stops are in walking distance from an apartment complex of some sort, or neighborhood, low-income neighborhoods. We try to kind of center those around those areas, especially seeing where our clients are starting to call in from now, so we can kind of help those folks out, getting around, moving around the city a little bit more. I just wanted, I just wanted to give, bring this update up to the board, so y'all be aware of where we stand right now. Currently, we are, we are looking to get this deviated fixed route up and going fairly soon. In January, I'll be going in front of the city council to discuss the stops in the city, within the city limits. Again, this route is very important for the city and the county to have for us to be able to see, to receive 5310 and 5311 grant funding. So to have that in place, we will, to get those funds, we'll need this route in place. As you can see, we have Mission Hospital as a route, we have the McDowell Medical Park, we have the Health Department, we have Spalding Woods Apartment, Walmart, we also have McDowell Medical Associates, McDowell Internal Medicine, K's Express, the Tailgate Market, Marion Pharmacy, Heritage Hills, Hook and Anchor, NC Works, the Quick Mart, and we have Capitol Hills Apartments, DSS. Also, we'll have a stop at the Friendship Homes, Ballo's, Fred's, the M&amp;M Supermarket, Black Bear General Store, Food Lion, Shelby's Place, the Country Diner, I did not know we have, but it is delicious, so have a chance to get there, please go get some breakfast. Blue Ridge Terrace, House of James, and the YMCA. So these are the proposed stops right now, I just wanted to bring that to y'all's attention, and if y'all have any feedback or any suggestions, please contact me, feel free to, and also you have Brenda Vaughn to speak for you, she's on our board, so if y'all have any kind of suggestions or anything, you can run it by her, and I'll see to those. That's all I have on the stops, I just wanted to bring that before you. Okay, for an approval tonight, I have with me our system safety plan, which is probably familiar, because I brought this back to y'all last December. I'm bringing it back before you guys, is because we relocated to Foothills Industry, a lot of stuff in the old SSP was kind of centered around DSS when we was located in that facility. So to be compliant with the state and also receive those 5310 and funding, we have to have this safety plan in place. So a lot of information still kind of looks the same, just kind of a few name changes, like I said, going from DSS to Foothills from where we're operating from. We had a system safety compliance review in October, which went fairly well for us being a new system. DOT was actually pretty impressed. We had, we had a few deficiencies, which we were able to complete before the auditor left, so that was good, and she was really impressed on what we're doing now. I mean, like I said, we had a couple minor things to fix due to lack of training, which we were not able to get in last year, but we were able to get in the trainings this year, so those will be fixed. But per your approval, we would like to take this to our Transportation Advisory Board and adopt this as our system safety plan.
Okay, Ashley, anything you need to add to that?
No, it's pretty, I think it's boilerplate from NC DOT, so there's not a lot of wiggle room on our side, but I haven't looked at it, it's fairly standard.
Make a motion, we approve. Second. Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye in opposed light sign. Okay, Brenda, this is impressive, I mean, to see the deviated fixed route proposal and the locations, you're doing a great job and your staff, and let them know that the board appreciates the work they do, and Brenda, thanks for serving that board. And it's just, it's just here again, another piece of the puzzle moving McDowell County forward, and so thanks for all you're doing down there.
Yes, and it's, thanks to all the stakeholders who got, is involved with the routes, and they're very excited as well, getting folks out, moving and seeing, especially the hospital, they're very pumped up about it, so I'm pretty excited.
Good deal.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank y'all.
Go Cowboys, right? All right, let's move to our next item, citizen comment. And do we have anybody who wishes to sign up to speak? You can do it still yet, and sign up, just put your name and your topic. If not, let's move to item, our commissioners and staff's greetings. And we always read, our board's done it for years, we always read the Christmas story, which Commissioner Peters does an excellent job doing that, he's going to do it again this year. But before we do that, we want to go ahead and start with Ashley, and we'll go around the table, and we'll give, we do our annual Christmas greeting to the people of McDowell County, so Mr. Wood, sir, go ahead and lead the board out.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to thank this board again for the opportunity to serve in my position and to serve the people of this county. I'm not a native, but I've been here 15 years, I chose to come here and I love it, and hope to stay a lot longer. But this year's been, my family's been blessed, and I do appreciate that blessing, but we see folks every day that haven't been blessed, and our role is to serve them and help them along to help them prosper like a lot of us have. So again, thank you for the opportunity, and just hope that everyone out there has a wonderful Christmas and a prosperous 2019.
Okay, Chair, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. I too appreciate working here, and I appreciate my job. I have lived here my entire life, and I don't blame anybody for getting here just as quick as you can and staying here, because it is a great place to live. And I would like to take this time to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, and to take time and reflect on the most wonderful gift that we've ever been given, and that's Jesus Christ.
Okay, all right, thank you. Mr. Green.
I'd like to say that it has been, again, an honor to serve this board for the past year. I was having a conversation with somebody today, and I told him, I said, the first time I ran for school board, they told me that after I was elected that I needed to go by the central office and fill out some papers, and I said, what kind of papers? They said, for your tax stuff. And I said, what tax stuff? They said, well, you get a check every month. And I said, I had no idea. What I'm trying to say is, is that not, that's not why I'm here. I'm here to serve the people of McDowell County, and I hope, and this is my heart's desire, that some way or other, that this Christmas season touches you down deep with an extra special gift from our Lord and Savior. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Vaughn.
Where do I start? I am a native here, married the boy next door, so we're both native here, how's that? McDowell County is my home, we lived military, we moved around, and there was nothing like getting back here. I appreciate everything that I've been allowed to do in this county, I appreciate everybody in the county. The fact that we live in a place where you can walk down the street and smile and say Merry Christmas, and people will say Merry Christmas back. If you lived in other places that I've been, they almost would kind of cuddle up to their purse and think you were trying to rob them. That's not a good place to live, this is, it's not like that here. I want to thank McDowell County, everybody that I'm on the board with here, our emergency personnel, just the people in general for being good citizens and helping to make this what it is. And I would like, too, like to say Merry Christmas and thank our Savior for everything he's allowed us to have here, a benefit. Everything comes from the good Father above.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Brown.
Well, like most everyone else, I'm a lifetime resident of McDowell County, greatest place on earth. I've lived here my entire life, and I've been all over the United States and a lot of different countries, and I've never found any place greater than McDowell County. It's been a pleasure to me to serve as your commissioner over the past four years, and looking forward to the next four. I love being a commissioner, I love representing the people of McDowell County, and you know, sometimes we can't, you know, we're elected to represent the majority, and sometimes we can't represent every individual the way that they want to be represented, but we do the best that we can to represent all. And I appreciate the opportunity, I just want to say tonight that I wish everyone out there, everyone present and everyone out there, a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you. Mr. Peters.
It's my 14th year being able to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, and just like Commissioner Vaughn said, probably nothing bothers me any worse than people just saying happy holidays, it's more than a holiday. It is the celebration of our birth, our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. That's the reason, that's what Christmas, Christ mass, that's what it's all about, is Christmas. If it had not been for the birth of Jesus, we would not have Christmas. And we need to always remember that, that that is the reason for the season, if that's what they want to call it. But from my family to yours, from McPeters family, we'd like to say Merry Christmas to you, and may God truly bless you.
Okay, and I want to say Merry Christmas to everyone in McDowell County. We live in a wonderful place, and sort of like an island, sometimes when you watch national news and see all what happens around the United States, just be able to, as Brenda said, walk down our little old streets in downtown Marion or Old Fort, and see people you know, talk to them, and have time of fellowship, that's a great place to live, and it's an honor to represent you and McDowell County, the people of McDowell County, that's our greatest asset, the people in McDowell County. Talented, creative, hardworking, caring, loving, giving, and that's why it's such an easy job to be your commissioner, one of your commissioners. And I want to here again, this time of year, wish you and your family a very Merry Christmas, and as already has been stated here tonight, Jesus is the reason for the season, and I thank the Lord for coming and being born and living 33 and a half years, dying on a cross, rising three days later, and he's coming back again. So I thank God for always many blessings, and we're going to have the Christmas story, and then we'll adjourn to our Monday, December 10th meeting at 5:00.
Luke chapter 2, we'll read verses 1 through 21, says, "And it came to pass in those days, that there went out a decree from Caesar Augustus, that all the world should be taxed. And this taxing was first made when Sirenius was governor of Syria. And all went to be taxed, everyone into his own city. And Joseph also went up from Galilee out of the city of Nazareth unto Judea, unto the city of David, which is called Bethlehem, because he was the house and lineage of David, to be taxed with Mary, his espoused wife, being great with child. And so it was, that while they were there, the days were accomplished, that she should be delivered. And she brought forth her firstborn son, and wrapped him in swaddling clothes, and laid him in a manger, because there was no room for them in the end. And there were in the same country shepherds, abiding in the field, keeping watch over their flock by night. And lo, the angel of the Lord came upon them, and the glory of the Lord shone round about them, and they were sore afraid. And the angel said unto them, fear not, for behold, I bring you good tidings of great joy, which shall be to all people. For unto you is born this day in the city of David, a Savior, which is Christ the Lord. And this shall be a sign unto you, that you shall find the babe wrapped in swaddling clothes, lying in a manger. And suddenly, there was with the angel, a multitude of the heavenly hosts praising God, and saying, glory to God in the highest, and on earth, peace, goodwill toward men. And it came to pass, as the angels were gone away from them into heaven, the shepherds said one to another, let us now go even unto Bethlehem, and see this thing which has come to pass, which the Lord hath made known unto us. And they came with haste, and found Mary, and Joseph, and the babe lying in a manger. And when they had seen it, they made known abroad the saying which was told them according, told them concerning this child. And all they that heard it wondered at these things, which were told them by the shepherds. But Mary kept all things, and pondered them in her heart. And the shepherds returned glorifying and praising God, for all the things that they had heard and seen. And it was told unto them. And when eight days were accomplished, for the circumcision of the child, his name was called Jesus, which was so named of the angel before he was conceived in the womb."
Dare you motion, we adjourn to Monday, December 10th at 5:00 PM.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye. Aye in opposed light sign, meaning it's adjourned to that date.